City council meeting for February 5th of 2024. Please rise while Pastor Glenn Walker of the New Evangelical, New Life Evangelical Free Church in Watertown leads us in prayer.
Let us pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you this evening for allowing us the privilege of coming before you as we pray in the name and authority of your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. Humble ourselves and recognize that it's you who's established and granted a level of authority to these men and women who are serving you by serving their community. Father, we pray for our local officials, asking that you would grant them grace and your wisdom in order to face unique challenges. Give insight, Lord, into the needs of the community, discernment to make right decisions in order to lead the city of Watertown well. May each member be drawn closer to you, God, as they become increasingly aware of their need of you and continually turn to you for help. Father, we ask you protect our community and the families that make up this community. We ask that you would turn away any attacks from the evil one who would seek to bring divisions and harm amongst us. And may this council be guided by the one desire to do what is pleasing to you, God. May the question they ask themselves before each vote is cast is the question, what would honor and please the Lord most? And we close our prayer time together by praying as you've taught us, saying, "Our Father in Heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come. Your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our debts as we also have forgiven our debtors. Lead us not into temptation, deliver us from evil. For yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen."
Thank you, Pastor Walker. I'm gonna do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Jerrance?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Quorum is established. With that, uh, well, actually, we're going to do a motion to approve the agenda, but we have two changes. At the request of Councilman Danforth, we are taking item K off of consent, and we will move that to the final item in the agenda. Item K is off of consent, and then item 9A is going to be struck from the agenda for tonight. So with those two changes, moving K off of consent to the end of the meeting and moving 9A off of the agenda for tonight, the chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion, Councilman Shuddy?
Just one thing. I just want to make sure we are aware on item I, no, L, sorry, item L. At least when I looked it up over the weekend, it had, it says for the community ban, but when you look it up, it also has Watertown cares.
It's just the, it's the wrong attachment. We'll get it fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And we could sure pull that if you wanted to.
Well, because right now, that's what we'd be approving is Watertown cares funding on the, which is fine. I mean, I'm on the board and I wouldn't mind seeing that.
On the, okay, let's make sure on the computer.
If you look up funding request, March.
Okay, you know what? I would, I wouldn't mind talking about that anyway. City Manager Mac, is it okay if we just take that and move it on to the regular agenda and make sure that the wording is exactly right?
Yeah, I, you can do whatever you like with that. Just a point of clarity, the attachment is wrong, but the agenda item is correct.
Okay, so the motion is correct.
It says approval of the contribution to the Watertown.
Okay, so as long as the motion is correct, the information following it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
So Councilman Shuddy, it's, it's up to you. If you want to move it off of consent, we sure can.
Nope, that's fine.
Anyone else? Um, I just wanted to say, but I can mention that at the end of the business, end of the meeting, just to say that we got that done for the community ban, because that's what the item was, is funding at least partially the Watertown community ban for this year. So with those two changes, motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to item 8A, a presentation and discussion on the Lenko Armored Rescue Vehicle. We'll go to Chief Tim Toomey of the Watertown Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for allowing me to present on this topic. I just want to preface it by saying, um, this is something that is there and dear to my heart. This isn't about getting something cool or, or something, you know, neat to have. This is a must-have, in my opinion, and this is gonna save lives. And not police, you know, police officers' lives, but also the public's life. So I have a little presentation that I have to show you. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the history of where we came from and where we're at right now, and then we'll dive into why Watertown needs a vehicle like this, an armored rescue vehicle. Feel free to jump in with any questions at the end. We'd be happy to answer any questions. I have my team here with me who helped put all this together and done a lot of the research. I got Captain Kirk Ellis, as well as Assistant Chief Ryan Remmers, who assisted me in this.
Chief, I'm going to encourage the council to sit through the entire presentation if there is a urgent question, but otherwise, I would prefer waiting to the end.
Thank you. So our current SWAT team is pictured here. I'm extremely proud of these guys. They train monthly. They're recognized in this region as the go-to team. These guys will respond anywhere in our region and have done so, and have done so successfully. I can't overstate how much, how dedicated they are. They're, they're volunteers. They don't get paid anything extra. These are our law enforcement officers, they're our detectives, they're our school resource officers, they're, they do an incredible job, and you could sleep soundly at night knowing they're there to respond to anything that might come our way. So I'm very proud of them. But where we, where did we come from? So our SWAT team was formed in the 90s. That blue vehicle in the back, we call that affectionately Big Blue. When I was SWAT team leader, that's the vehicle we had. That vehicle was given from the school district, who got it from Stamp-on, I believe, then over to Dive Rescue, and then it came over to us from Dive Rescue. We kept it, stored it out there to shed. There's no armor plating, there's no nothing. It was simply a transport vehicle. Had barely had brakes, barely had steering. It was, it was a nightmare, but we made do. You know, we're, over the years, I've been serving this community since, for over 20 years, and, and we enjoy the crawl, walk, run method. We don't just dive into something. So we got this vehicle as a beginning vehicle, as a transport vehicle, and this is what our team would deploy. I'm that guy right up front, so. Here, we'll zoom in just to see how good-looking I was back then. So Big Blue, Big Blue served its purpose, but it had to go. We do deploy in just the back of a pickup truck. When our current vehicle isn't running properly, this is what we have to do. This is an actual deployment to a high-risk warrant that we had to roll up to a house, sit in ducks. So we make do with what we can. But in 2014, Kirk Ellis kinda led the team to see what was out there for us, and he contacted Rochester Armored Car Company, and they just happened to be getting rid of one of their armored cars. We reached out to a lot of people in the community, including some welders and Lake Area Tech, and we brought this armored car to Watertown, and with a lot of modifications, this is what she looked like brand new, and we were pretty proud of it. It didn't have the running boards, um, all that. So just so you know, this, this one is rated for a .44 Magnum, and when I say rated, that means the armor plating would stop up to a .44 Magnum pistol. So it's not rated for a rifle or anything like that, but it's better than nothing. And, and it served us really well. This thing has been all over the place on high-risk warrants, on hostage negotiations, all sorts of things, and it gives us a little bit of comfort or a little bit of safety. But as the time has gone on, over the 10 years, it already had a lot of miles on it when we bought it, but right now, it's sitting with 582,658 miles on it, and it is showing its wear. When we put it together, there was a lot of Bondo used, there was a lot of paint, there was a lot of lipstick that we put on this thing to make it look good, to be proud of, but it has its flaws. Starting to have electrical problems. This is a picture of the battery that exploded when I tried to start the vehicle. It's just that one example of the many, many issues that we're starting to see with that. This is called delamination. These are bulletproof windows for up to a .44 Magnum, but once they start delaminating, they're no longer bulletproof. It, it's the glass that's separating. So bulletproof is layered glass, so the glass is separating, and this is a company that no longer exists. There's no way to get replacement parts, there's no way to replace these windows effectively. This is some of the Bondo that's starting to show its wear and tear. Things are starting to shake and come loose. Some more delam. The rust is, is, you know, we painted over it and did the best we could, but it's starting to pop back up. And this is what the back of the armored rescue vehicle looks like. As you can see, there's a dividing wall in here. There's no access or communications to the driver. Our radios, because we work off a tower, do not work from the back of the car, back of the vehicle to the front of the vehicle. So we actually have to use walkie-talkies that you would buy at a store to communicate between the driver and, and the team. You can see this, I'm gonna refer to this later, but keep note of this cord. This is a, for a throw phone. Our guys will take this cord out and will, will walk up to a house, throw a phone through a window or something to try and communicate with people, but we'll talk more about that here in a minute. And Ryan or Kirk, feel free to jump in here if I'm missing anything. I get a little excited. So that's what, where we're at, and that's where we are now. So why does Watertown need a rescue vehicle? And I've heard this question from some people, and why Watertown? We're a small, safe community. And for the most part, you're right, but we're not immune to the issues of the world. But the number one priority is protecting our, our public and our police officers. This vehicle offers us some cover. It offers us a safe, secure environment to get up close to an incident. As you can imagine, they happen. I, I'll, I'll talk about some issues that happen right here in Watertown, but they could spark off at any moment, whether it's a domestic violence, where a hostage situation occurs, or it's a school shooting, or something happening at their regional airport. They happen, and we have to have a way to respond and respond quickly. Because as you know, common sense would tell you every second counts, and, and lives are lost. So we can't wait for Sioux Falls to get here. We can't wait for, you know, the Highway Patrol to bring their vehicle from here. It's just not, it's not reasonable. Again, for hostage situation, it stands off, it gives us a place to work from, it's safe, it's secure, it gets us close, it helps us save lives, reduces the risk. This is one of the most important things. This is what we train for. It's not about shooting a bad guy, it's about rescuing people, and this vehicle will allow us to do that. Say we have an active shooter, a workplace violence situation that's ongoing, but we have people down. We're not gonna be able to get an ambulance up to them. The fire department's not gonna be able to get up there safely. So this vehicle will allow us to get as close as we can to evacuate people in a timely manner to get them down that they need. You know, and people say, well, that's not gonna happen in Watertown, but people said that in Uvalde, too. You know, they say that all over the place. So Kimball in 2015, they, they never thought something like that would happen, and it De-escalation and negotiations is one of the major reasons we have this. Like I said, it gets us up close, it helps us slow things down, and it helps us communicate, and it saves lives. I, I'm just gonna keep going back to that. Our goal is to save lives and use the minimal force necessary to do so. So most people are in crisis. It, it's not like they're evil people, but they're in crisis, and, and they're not thinking clearly. So if we can buy them time, and we can talk to them and get them to help them need, we're gonna save lives. But we can't do that if we're, if we're out in the open. You know, every, everybody has a rifle, you know, this is South Dakota, and, you know, it's just, it's just not practical. The regional airport is one of the big reasons, you know, that we train with the, with the home, um, air marshal, TSA, and their tactic is get a, get a vehicle as close as you can to the front of that airplane and as heavy as you can, because you don't want that airplane taking off. So we do train on tubular assaults, they're called tubular assaults, it's an airplane entry. So if we didn't have a vehicle like this, we wouldn't be able to get up to that plane without putting ourselves and the public at risk. But all the critical infrastructure, schools, businesses, factories, the William Pipeline, those are all targets, you know, and we are, we are vulnerable to those targets, and we have to be prepared. That's our job in the police department, is to be prepared to respond to anything that might come our way. And to deploy quickly. So some of the incidents that's happened in Watertown, this was a recent incident out in, down in the southeast part of town where a man was suicidal, and we responded. We had this vehicle here for cover. We were trying to approach the, the house. He did shoot out, out at the officers as they approached. We were trying to get a negotiator in there. Unfortunately, before we were able to get in there, he did commit suicide. We've had standoffs with people in crisis. We had this last year, the barricaded suspect that had felony warrants at the hotel. We had to use our team there, we deployed gas in there. He came out with a handgun in his hand, ready to shoot it out with us. Luckily, our guys were there with the taser and some other lethal tactics to take him into custody without anybody getting killed. Think about standoffs in vehicles. You know, somebody's in, in a mental health crisis, they're in their vehicle, and, and they have a gun to their head. We can't just walk up and say, hey, you know, what can we do for you? We need a safe way to communicate with that, and that's what this vehicle will do. And again, this isn't just for Watertown. We're, we're relied upon, and rightfully or not, I think good neighbors help good neighbors. And we do respond reasonably. Our hostage negotiator has responded more to outside our region than he has inside our, our region. In the last five, eight years, he's responded at least 12 times to negotiations, and, and 100% of the time, they were able to successfully negotiate that. We did an exhaustive search. This wasn't just something, we just want a new vehicle. We looked at other options. We talked to other agencies. Assistant Chief Ryan Remmers, each one of you have a packet in front of you, and there is all the different police departments that, that we reached out to that have this type of vehicle, and we found out the good and the bad. We looked at used vehicles. But one of the most, one of the biggest questions we always get is, what about the 1033 program? For those that don't know what that program is, it's the US government demilitarizing equipment and then providing them at, at no cost to local law enforcement agencies. So there's a thing called an MRAP, and it's a, refresh my memory, it's a mind-resistant ambush protection. And I'll show you what that is. This is what's common, and this is what people are getting for free. So if you, you go onto this website and you request one of these, and they are monsters. They're about 60,000 pounds. They're extremely tall. They, you can't drive them, like, we were told by the sheriff, he can't drive his across the 14th Avenue Bridge, it's too heavy. You can't get them close to houses, you'll sink right in the grass. You can't drive them down alleys. The problem is, you don't know what you're getting, because these guys will strip the armor out of it. In Kimball, they didn't even know that their front end wasn't armor plated when they got shot and disabled and then had to be rescued. You don't know what you're getting for mechanics. They're very hard to get parts for. They're specialized army or military equipment to run diagnostics. You need a special tool for that, you need a, it's, it's a monster, and it's a military vehicle. You know, I, I don't know, it's just not practical for an urban setting. The sheriff's office does have one, and we have a good partnership, and we'd be able to use that, but again, it's not practical for what we would use it for. We looked at used and refurbished. There's many, many reasons why, you know, it might sound upfront, it might sound like you're gonna save money by buying a used or refurbished vehicle. For instance, this one is 2009, I think it was $125,000, but it's not an armored vehicle. Just the box is armored, the front end's not armored. It's a two-wheel-drive vehicle. It's only rated for .44 Magnum, it's not rated for a rifle. A whole bunch of reasons why you wouldn't want to go with a used vehicle. I mean, not to mention that you're, you're trusting what you're buying with people's lives, but you're, you're gonna get as is, there's limited to no warranty. You don't know what technology is in it. The maintenance and reliability is an issue. You know, it can go on and on, you just don't know what you're gonna get. And for an investment of this size, I, I think it's more cost-effective to buy new, where you, where you get the warranty and, and you know what you're getting, you know there's parts that can be replaced, you know there's mechanics that's gonna work on it. You can trust that you have the protection. You know that if a bullet does come your way, it's not gonna come through that vehicle. So grant opportunities, we're always looking for grant opportunities, and the Homeland Security Grant is one opportunity. We, we'll be coming forward to the council for approval to apply for a partial payment towards this vehicle. We're gonna ask for $100,000. I have no idea if we're gonna get it. We work with eight different counties in a, in a group setting, and, and it's really difficult. Last year, I think it was $400,000 was awarded between the eight, eight counties, and it's a, it's a really competitive-type process to, to get approved. So we're gonna do the best we can. Captain Steve Rehors is really good with working with these people, and we'll do what we can to see if we can get $100,000 knocked off this price, if we're fortunate enough to get one. So that's the end of the question, or that's the end of the presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any question you have, and shoot them my way, please.
All right, thank you, Chief. I'm gonna open it up for questions and comments from the council, but I wanted to just start by taking my privilege of addressing you. I was gone at the last council meeting when this was voted upon, and it was my understanding that there were some questions that came up soon after that meeting, both in the council and in the public. And I want you to know, and I hope your department all knows, that questions does not mean lack of support.
Sure.
We are all supportive of the job that you do. I know people have heard me say it countless times since I've become mayor. It is the number-one quality-of-life issue in any city, especially in Watertown, is the quality of life, the protection of life, and that rests squarely upon the police department and Watertown Fire Rescue. If we don't get those two departments right, it doesn't matter how many other amenities you have in town that you run, maintain, or operate. If you don't take care of public safety and the health and welfare of our citizens, nothing else really matters. So I know that there could be questions regarding the cost or the process, but that does not mean that we do not support your department. I hope you know that.
Yes, sir.
It's just also our job to be stewards of tax dollars, and I know that you've been talking about that as well. In regards to the, to the dollars, I know that there was some questions on social media about that. My immediate reaction when I saw that was, I looked at it kind of like an ambulance call. I don't know how much, what percentage of equipment in an ambulance goes used on a typical call, but I would imagine that it's a small fraction of all the equipment. Let's say 10% of all the equipment in an ambulance is used on a typical call, meaning 90% goes unused. So you could make the argument, we're spending too much for ambulances. But the fact is, on that one call, when your life is in jeopardy, or a loved one's life is in jeopardy, you're gonna be super happy that the city of Watertown paid the extra money to get that 90% extra coverage in an ambulance to save someone's life. And I know that there can be questions regarding the cost of this vehicle, but that's kind of where my head goes here, too, is if it can save the lives of some of the men and women in your department, or some of the citizens of this, of this city, I know I'm supportive, and I know that the, I know that the council is supportive, it's just trying to make the best decision as well. So I just want you to know that.
I appreciate that.
I'm sure that I speak, speak for everyone. But with that said, it's also part of our job to do due process, and that's why I will open it up for questions and comments as well, so.
If I just made a comment about the price, is you'll see in your packet that there's an updated quote after the last council meeting. We went back and, and really examined everything that we had listed in there, and we did determine, based on, after talking to the company, that their gas engines are performing well before it was a diesel engine. So we were able to save, what, about $16,000, Kirk? $16,000 by going from a diesel back to a gas engine.
Cool. And that, yeah, that, another reaction that I had is, I know guys who spend six figures on their own truck, and that's just driver, driver around town. So it's like, I know that this is a lot of money, and I don't mean to make light of it.
Right.
Because it is a lot of money.
Absolutely.
But I'm just saying, you know, compare it with something. So Councilman Tupper?
I'm gonna kinda echo a lot of what the mayor just said, but if anybody that knows me and has worked with me on the council over the years, you know I've been a huge supporter of public safety. I mean, to me, that is a, the biggest quality-of-life issue in the community. I look at a lot of things that we spend money on that, you know, I wanna pick on Don back there in the back, kinda what the mayor said, you know, it wasn't all that many years ago, not all of our ambulances were advanced life support. But we seen the need. I can't imagine what a lot of that equipment costs to, to do that. Do we need a ladder truck at the fire department?
Right.
We use it. Thank God we got it when we do need it, and those are the things I look at. It's an ever-changing world that we're living in, unfortunately, that we even gotta look at something like this. But for me to sit here and say that, that I could deny this and, and have to face somebody's family that we could've saved by doing this, I mean, I couldn't live with myself. I say, public safety is my number-one goal in, in being on the council. So it's a lot of money. I know you guys have did your research. I've got tons of emails and calls, which most of them were dead-set against it.
Sure.
But I still gotta live with myself, and, and I would say that I would not be doing my job if I didn't support the public safety of this community and surrounding area. And that's one thing about it, too, it's not just Watertown, you guys do go out in the surrounding area. You know, we, we can go back a lot of years, and when the Dive Rescue Team first started, you know, I've had people ask me, what do they need all that equipment for? Well, if it's one of your kids out drowned, and you'd be happy that they got all that equipment, and it's kinda the same thing. You know, we got, got a police department that we're very, very proud of, a fire department that we're very, very proud of. Public safety is number-one in Watertown, and I will always support that, as long as, as long as we do our due diligence and, and make sure we're doing the right thing, which I believe that you gentlemen are, and, and thank you for doing that, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor. May.
Chief.
You know, I've been serving this community for, for over 20 years, and I think my reputation for being conservative shines. I would not ask for something that I don't think is, is needed for our, our police officers and the public. So I, we recognize this is a huge investment. We understand, you know, there's roads that need to be fixed, there's other priorities, but to the mayor's point, that if you don't have public safety, you don't have a thriving city, so I appreciate your comments.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a comment, basically, you know, prior to my serving on this council, I could see potentially, you know, seeing the comments and people talking about it, it was the talk of the town for a few days, right? And understandable, I'm not minimizing that. I'm fortunate, though, being in this position and being able to, to be, you know, just, not just sitting here, but touring the police department, getting to know you guys there and, and all, all you that work there. You kinda do get a better perspective on the need and, and why we do this, and from when we're in these positions. So I really appreciate you doing the, the presentation today as you did, because that just hopefully really does help bring understanding behind it. You know, I was kinda privy to some of this. Of course, I kinda gained a lot more information tonight as well, so appreciate it. But even more so, there's some that I could see the, you know, not understanding, and I could see how that would happen, but this, this helps hopefully our community come together on why we do this, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. May. It's a, it's a good thing that people don't think we need it, right? It's the police department's job not only to reduce crime, but to reduce the fear of crime, right? So if, if people feel safe, they believe it's a safe town, that's great. That means the police department's doing their job.
Thank you. Councilman Peters?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, quick question here, a couple of them. You mentioned a grant, and maybe I'm drawing a blank, but did we talk about that last time we met here? Can you maybe talk a little bit about how that came up, or why you guys decided to go after that?
Sure. It's just timing, is, is, this is when we're putting together the Homeland Security Grant, and typically, we put in with the emergency manager, the Kennesaw County Sheriff's Office, the fire department, and the police department, all come up with a project, a theme, like this year it's hazmat. So we just have a better chance of getting a grant if we all work together and put in for one project and then we divide it up. After a meeting with Steve Rehorse, who is in charge of our grant department, he did say that he talked to Homeland Security, we didn't think they would fund this vehicle, but after talking to them, they said they would definitely consider it in a partial way. There's no way we're going to get the 300, whatever it is, $346,000, but they'll do a partial funding. So that's why this just came up, it's just perfect timing. So keep your fingers crossed, hopefully that, but we won't know until March whether they'll partially fund it or not. And I believe you have to have a commitment to purchase it before they would consider it.
Follow up, Mayor. So is this different than the 1033 program?
Yes.
Okay, it is. And I, just looking here at this information you provided and I see a lot of these other communities use the 1033 program, any, and I'm not a specialist in the 1033, so why is that not on the table for this particular?
For one, there's no vehicles out there available, but again, you're going to get the military MRAP.
The one you were showing earlier.
Yeah, yep, so.
Mayor, well, so the service region, obviously, we heard a lot about this and one of my defense, I guess I shouldn't say defense, one of my responses was, well, this is going to serve more than just the city of Watertown. Can you talk a little bit about your service territory and typically how far you go for some of these calls?
Yeah, it's a mutual aid agreement that we have with the other counties and, you know, we go wherever the need is. We've actually deployed out to Redfield, or began to deploy out to Redfield to the hospital situation they had out there, but was stood down after it was resolved before we got there. But it's mainly our Hamlin, Clark, you know, those types of areas, other small agencies that don't have this equipment, they don't have the manpower to handle high-risk situations like that. So we stand ready to help them and as they would help us, you know, I can count a million times exaggeration, but where they came to help us, you know, so I think it's just the right thing to do. You know, and there was conversation, well, should they pay for some of this? And it's just, it's just not feasible for them and, you know, it's an ownership issue. You know, that's why we're, the grant, we're going out on a standalone grant. We're not going to go in with the sheriff's office and everything because they already had that plan made. So we're doing a standalone grant, so it's Watertown Police Department's vehicle.
Got it, okay. A couple more things here. So I see the new price is 336,000 and one way I looked at this just as a justifiable reason is, okay, if we're buying a $336,000 vehicle and you mentioned earlier that the life expectancy is about 20 years.
Oh, at least, yep.
At a minimum.
Yep.
So if you take that, you know, divided by the population of Watertown, which is around 23,000 people, it costs the average taxpayer 74 cents for 20 years per year to essentially own this. So you look at it from that perspective and it is, it's a long-term asset. So I agree with everything the mayor and deputy mayor said, certainly supportive of quality of life and law enforcement. The flip side of that is, we've been asked, well, what's typical for a community the size of Watertown, right? Do we need a $336,000 armored car? And I see you guys have stripped down, you know, as much as you can. Do you guys feel as though this is about as bare bones as you can get for the price for what you need?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Jerrons.
Just a quick follow-up to something you mentioned in your presentation. Thanks for that because the used vehicle was the question I received emails about, the options. I believe part of it is a 44 mag.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few of us that have those and some of our, Vince is here, he's seen that thing in action before. I'm not good enough to hit a vehicle, but, yeah, I mean, they're common.
Yeah.
So just, you know, knowing that it's capable of just about piercing a lot of these other vehicles, thanks for answering that in that presentation. But that eight-party group, or eight, is that an eight-county group that is going after this grant money? Are they, I mean, they don't, we don't need to get into specifics because then when we start digging into specifics, then that brings up 100 other questions, but.
Yeah.
Is that part of the group that is receiving benefits from your SWAT team, from the deployment of this? And is there any, is there any type of, you know, adding on to the grant that we just heard about? I mean, is that, is that really something that maybe there could be some help in grant form instead of ownership form?
That's certainly a possibility. It's actually a 10-county group that extends Hamlin Counties as far south as this region goes and then it goes up to Brown County. Typically, how that meeting looks is you've got each, each of those 10 counties has two representatives. It's the emergency management director for the county and a law enforcement representative. And it's a lot of time, it's give and take between these counties because there's a limited amount of funding, usually in the neighborhood of $350,000 for those 10 counties. So they're all kind of positioning and strategizing how they can get the most bang for their own county's buck. It would, it's a really tough ask for us to try to expect to get basically about a third of their, of the region's funding when we're only one-tenth of the counties or, you know, in the region. However, we always argue that we're also about 25% of the population because us and Brown County make up most of the population in that 10-county region. But it's possible, we're optimistic that these counties will look to us and see, there's a need for Watertown to have a vehicle such as this because it might be responding to their own communities too.
Thanks, Ryan. Follow-up quickly unless you have one, Tim.
Yeah, I just have something. We get this grant pretty much every year, it's never a sure thing, but this grant has really equipped our team with some really, I mean, with vests, with shields, with Homeland Security-type things that this year, the sheriff's, or the fire department will get a new jaws of life if it's approved. So it's a great grant, so hopefully we'll get approved.
Thanks, Chief. To me. I said Tim.
That.
I acted myself for the first time in six months.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
Councilman, thank you, I noticed that, but thank you.
It was quick, it was quick, so, yeah, that, again, I do show from this chair support. You know, when I was campaigning for this position, I had to believe that that was my number one reason is to not mess with the police department and fire department. So I echo the comments that have been made there. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you.
Councilman Peters. Councilman Danforth hasn't spoken yet. Councilman Danforth?
Sit back for about 20 minutes. Actually, I just want to, I just want to share some of the input and interactions I've had with the public because I think that's really, really important. Since we had our meeting, I've had a lot of input on this, a lot of discussions and far and away, majority of the discussions were really focused on cost and not the need, if that makes sense.
Sure.
And I don't disagree with that. You know, the heartache I have on this is the cost. It isn't the need and I've made that very clear to everybody I've talked with. They aren't going to convince me that we don't have a need. It's how can we best fill this need, cost-wise, and what that is. Interestingly, I almost feel like these two people were talking to each other, but they weren't. But I got an email from a gentleman that was adamantly opposed that we had this need. And his comment was, we don't need this. He says, what we need to do is be able to divert this funding to our schools so we have officers in our schools. And my comment was, well, if we, if we need officers in our schools, we're saying there's a real threat. And how do we handle that from a law enforcement standpoint if and when a threat like that occurs? So I asked him, I said, what would you want from your grandchild if they were in their school and there was an active shooter in your school? What would you want? And there was this pause and then he said, I get it. Not long after that, I got another email from a gentleman, we conversed back and forth. I asked him the same question and there was this pause in his response and he came back and said, you know, I have a grandson that is a police officer out in California. He says, do your best, he said, to justify what we get. So if we jump to the emotional conclusion of we don't need it versus the responsible conclusion that we have, as Councilman Tupper has expressed, it's easy to be on that side, not your side, but the public's side and say, we don't need it. Because they aren't the ones that have to answer to the family or the individuals that are affected because we didn't necessarily have a tool there for them. That, I lose sleep over that as well and in full support of that. I had a discussion with a law enforcement personnel that I know. I said, what's your opinion on a community like ours? The question wasn't, the answer wasn't if there was a need or not, absolutely a need. But this person said, well, since I haven't been involved, don't know what the steps have been taken to get to where what the city's proposing. But I said, just tell me about the need. And the comment was, well, you know, you don't need it until you need it. It's an insurance policy. And then, another good comment was, you know, we train for all kinds of possible events or scenarios from a public safety standpoint that in all likelihood, probably would never happen. But we train for them all the time because we need to be prepared in the event they are. And that's really what this is about, in my opinion. So I've made it clear and I've struggled with this, but we spent an hour and a half the other day, chief, talking, where you guys explained things, we've had our presentation tonight. If we can't find a unit that truly meets our needs, then what we have here is the direction that I got to support. So, thank you.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this, no question about it. And I do want to thank you folks for bringing your presentation because I think that'll help justify it to the public. That's very helpful to us, I think, so thanks.
Councilman Peters.
Thanks, Mayor. Last question here, agree with Councilman Beeler, I think that the presentation was extremely helpful. This will not be the last time we have something like this come in front of us in terms of, you know, increase in price on something like this that was budgeted for in terms of timing. Can you maybe just step through the process for the public on how, when you identified the increase, who you informed the process before it got to us? Just to help kind of frame up timelines and how this came about?
Yep, and I'd be happy to and I will take it on the chin a little bit that I wasn't as clear as, I wasn't hiding anything, but I hope that nobody thinks I was. I just, it was a, I didn't have the justification attached to the agenda item. So we got the original quote back in November. Obviously, we've been planning for this for a long time, it's not something that just popped up. So when it became evident that 2025 was when it was listed for purchase and we started looking at quotes and things like that. So we found out from Lenco, who's their sole source provider, that it takes about 14 to 16 months to make one of these things. And if we're going to purchase it, authorized to be purchased in 2025, we went back to say, hey, we got to get this thing ordered early, we're going to go to the council. Is it a good quote? Well, you know, with the wars going on and all this other explanations with armor plating and the increase in steel and everything, the chassis alone was a crazy increase. It went all the way up to, what was the price, Kirk? 352. I added that quote to the agenda without an explanation to the city manager or anybody else, not thinking so. I apologize if anybody thought we were doing something, you know, trying to sneak something through. We weren't. I'm fully, I'm 100% transparent. So it was a mistake on my part and I'll take that on the chin. Yeah, did that answer your question? Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Tupper.
Let's hope you got to hire somebody to dust that thing every now and then, put it that way. You know, you look back, how many years you guys been wearing bulletproof vests?
Yeah, since, yeah, more than 25 years ago, yeah.
But who would have ever guessed years ago that that would be a requirement?
Right.
I mean, the ever-changing world we live in today and I just want to say, let's dust it off a lot, I hope, so hopefully we never need it. But unfortunately, I'm sure we will, so thank you.
And I hope the public's assured that we train and we train hard and we train for every scenario that we can think of and Watertown SWAT team is prepared, so.
Councilman?
Just one follow-up is, you know, we talked about some of the other counties and stuff. Do you have any of those outlying communities or counties that are part of your SWAT team?
No, no, it's solely Watertown Police Department.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. There had been some talk as to whether or not this needed to be voted upon again from the council. I'm not sensing that sentiment. I know if it were to be voted on again, I would vote all in favor and I think everyone has expressed that desire, so unless council has a problem with that, I will move on. All right.
But just to be clear, this has to be ordered because in order to get it in 2025, so we're going to go ahead and order it.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Jerrons.
This isn't really, wasn't covered here, but in this long, in-depth presentation that the community has not seen, really, you just touched on a little bit, but it really was the increase in cost of the armor.
Right, exactly.
Also went up because of demand in other places in the world.
Yep.
So, I mean, there's just, community is just one, you know, they just want to justify the cost, so.
Yeah. Well, thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Chief, thank you. Counsel, we'll move on to item 11A and approval of resolution number 24-01, a borrower's resolution for the wastewater collection system and treatment facilities improvement, project number 2317. We'll go to our Public Works Director, Assistant City Manager, Heath Von I.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up action. If you recall back in August and September last year, we discussed approaching the South Dakota DA and R SRF program by their October of '23 deadline for new SRF funding, the state revolving fund regarding infrastructure projects for water and wastewater. In our August and September meetings, we agreed to go ahead and apply for that funding. We've since been awarded that funding, that additional 25 million in funds through the SRF program. And this is one of two resolutions that are on the agenda tonight that help carry that across the finish line as far as the formalization of those funding packages with the state for that $25 million. One is the borrower's resolution, which is the first action item, which pretty much just formalizes the city's commitment as a borrower to the SRF program and some of the commitments that we're responsible for are outlined in that resolution. And the next item on the agenda will be the financial-related resolution that is also required of the state that outlines the amount of user fee impact for this amount of financing. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for questions and comments, Counsel. Councilman Danforth.
Heath, could you, could you just take a minute and provide just a backdrop for the community of what is this, I mean, at the 30-second discussion of, here's what the project is, and why we need it? Could you do that? I know we had that discussion during budget time, but if we could, I know there's been some questions that are asked of me today. If you could do that, I would appreciate that. I think the public would as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, Councilman Danforth. The impetus behind this project is the wastewater treatment plant is, lived out its useful life, so to speak, as far as the mechanics and some of the structures within it. I believe it was designed and built in the late 90s, if I remember right, 97-ish, 95, 97. And so with that, we've decided to leverage some of the ARPA funding, I believe this is all ARPA, I don't think we got any bill of money for this, but some of the ARPA funding a couple of years ago that we committed to put into our wastewater infrastructure, which gave us a pretty good shot in the arm to get this accomplished. It was initially set out with a $36 million goal in mind and over time, again, this process is dragged on now, not dragged on, but had to go through the duration of at least all of two years. And that pricing and the needs that were identified have grown, not only at the wastewater treatment facility, but also throughout the collection system. And that's where this additional 25 million in loan came to be a necessity and was discussed again last August and September to pursue additional funding so we could have a more comprehensive project that would address many of the collection system needs, which are some of our forest main lift stations and some of the gravity sewer pipes that are within our streets, but then also the full extent of the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. Now, those upgrades at the plant are twofold. One is because the equipment's just old and it's useful life, like I mentioned, but also from a capacity expansion standpoint, this work at the wastewater treatment plant will increase the wastewater treatment capacity for several decades to come into the future.
Thank you very much.
Any follow-up?
No, we're good.
Any further comments or questions, Counsel? All right, hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
The anticipated monthly surcharge is $10.90 per user. We did discuss this again back in September of last year. At that time, we anticipated it would be in that $8 to $9 range. We're spelling out 1090 here. I will say this is a conservative number on being on the high end of being conservative to make sure our bases are covered and could very well end up being a little bit less than that. And I also wanted to point out that through our finance office, we have the latitude to administer that $10.90 user fee over what we're expecting to be two years, in 2025 and in 2026. The other thing I'll note, that even with that surcharge, there are several communities in our state and our region that are in the exact same boat. They're leveraging ARPA funds to do similar improvements and their rates will also be increasing. And I cite that because I don't have the exact information in front of me, but Watertown tends to hover in the bottom third of user fees for wastewater services. Frankly, for most of our utilities, we're usually in that bottom third as far as the expense to customers. And we expect with this increase, we jump up to about midpoint, but that's without taking into account anybody else's increases. So, it's likely we'll still end up in that bottom third of user rates within the region and across the state. With that, I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for questions and comments, council. Councilman Danforth?
Is it my understanding that, well, number one, the surcharge is required of us as part of our terms and conditions of the loans? But as soon as that loan is ultimately paid off at whatever point, that surcharge goes away for that need, correct? For that loan? Okay, so it's specific to that loan, that item, not to say that we aren't going to have over the course of 10, 20, 30 years, whatever it is, our rate increases that we normally have anyway. But this specific 1090 associated to this is, it's going to go away at end of loan, correct? Payoff?
Finance Officer Bob Zine?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Just a quick question. Are these interest rates fixed for the, till the full duration of the term?
Yes, it's a fixed rate.
Any further questions, comments, council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Durand?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 11B, an approval of a resolution 24-02 for a wastewater fee surcharge in relation to the wastewater collection system and treatment facilities improvement, project number 2317. Public Works Director Heath Von I.
Thank you again, Mayor. Again, this is the financial component to that same SRF loan. First one being the borrower's obligations and then now in this resolution, we specifically spill out the amount of a user surcharge that is anticipated to be needed to cover that amount of debt over the life of that loan. So, that $25 million over 30 years at 3.25%, I think it was. Yes, Kristen tells me, 3.25% over 30 years. The anticipated monthly surcharge is $10.90 per user. We did discuss this again back in September of last year. At that time, we anticipated it would be in that $8 to $9 range. We're spelling out 1090 here. I will say this is a conservative number on being on the high end of being conservative to make sure our bases are covered and could very well end up being a little bit less than that. And I also wanted to point out that through our finance office, we have the latitude to administer that $10.90 user fee over what we're expecting to be two years, in 2025 and in 2026. The other thing I'll note, that even with that surcharge, there are several communities in our state and our region that are in the exact same boat. They're leveraging ARPA funds to do similar improvements and their rates will also be increasing. And I cite that because I don't have the exact information in front of me, but Watertown tends to hover in the bottom third of user fees for wastewater services. Frankly, for most of our utilities, we're usually in that bottom third as far as the expense to customers. And we expect with this increase, we jump up to about midpoint, but that's without taking into account anybody else's increases. So, it's likely we'll still end up in that bottom third of user rates within the region and across the state. With that, I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for questions and comments, council. Councilman Danforth?
Is it my understanding that, well, number one, the surcharge is required of us as part of our terms and conditions of the loans? But as soon as that loan is ultimately paid off at whatever point, that surcharge goes away for that need, correct? For that loan? Okay, so it's specific to that loan, that item, not to say that we aren't going to have over the course of 10, 20, 30 years, whatever it is, our rate increases that we normally have anyway. But this specific 1090 associated to this is, it's going to go away at end of loan, correct? Payoff?
Finance Officer Bob Zine?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Just a quick question. Are these interest rates fixed for the, till the full duration of the term?
Yes, it's a fixed rate.
Any further questions, comments, council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Durand?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We are on to item K from consent, an approval of a bid award for a 2024 Bacca S50 Windrow compost turner via Sourcewell contract to Echoverse in the amount of roughly $462,000. City Manager Mac or Public Works Director Von I, which one of you would like to take in? All right, Assistant City Manager Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is budgeted for 2024 and I believe the original budget amount was in $738,000. What staff has done now that we're into the new fiscal year, they've explored different units, pieces of equipment, compost turners that would serve the function that we need out there at the landfill and have come back well within budget at that $462,000 amount, 462-805 to be exact. And this is being procured through a Sourcewell contract, so it meets the competitive bid laws required by the state. And I believe there were a couple of other alternatives that were considered in the attached bid summary to the council memo. And this is a piece of equipment that we felt would best serve our needs at the landfill and continuing to provide the composting function that we carry out out there. With that, later on the agenda, I was going to wait to introduce him, but we have Scott Davis, our brand-new solid waste superintendent, in the audience here tonight with us. He and I will stand by for any questions council might have.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. We're going to open up for some questions. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess whoever could answer this question, I'm just curious on the, is there any data on the usage of the compost in a year's, calendar year? You know, what kind of value, what the community gets out of this, I guess? I know my wife and I have taken advantage of the program for our own gardening reasons. So, I'm just curious if there is any data to share.
Yes. Scott, if you could join at the podium, you could fill in the gaps where I fall short, but if you could join at the mic of the podium here and I'll call on Scott. Again, Scott Davis, Superintendent of Solid Waste. I'll put him on the spot here, but for, again, for information, I don't have. I do know, Councilman, that we give out, at least last year, we give out 238 tons of compost to the community. That's the giveaway stuff, not to mention the sales side of it. But there's also a revenue component where we bring in about $18,000 annually for the compost that we do sell, you know, because we don't give it away for commercial use. It's sold for commercial use. The other point that's a benefit in providing this service at our landfill is the fact that it, if we're going to provide yard waste pickup, we have to have some form of either having our own compost program like we do or haul it off to another site which accepts it. We're not allowed to bury it in our landfill according to the state's DA and R, subtitle D, requirements that we operate our landfill under. Because of how the organics of yard waste breaks down, it just isn't allowable under that permit requirement. There's a lot of technicalities involved in that because of the anaerobic process, how it breaks down all the methane gas it produces, yada, yada, yada. Scott could tell you a lot more about that, but that's why the state doesn't allow that particular item to be buried in the landfill. So, it is a service that we're providing to the community that's absorbed into our solid waste collection rates. We don't, we don't assess a separate yard waste fee. And I think a lot of community members like to take advantage of that. Fortunately, this is an enterprise fund, so we're able to schedule those rates and make sure that we're charging enough for the garbage collection, but still being able to provide for this service and pay for pieces of equipment like this out of that same enterprise fund.
Any follow-up, Councilman?
No, just, yeah, thank you for clarifying that. That hopefully helps many folks on this, on this particular, because it looks like a, you know, large dollar amount, right? When you think about compost. But no, it's, I appreciate that information.
Councilman Peters?
Got a question for you, Assistant City Manager Von I. So, you mentioned that we were budgeted for $738,000 for this item, correct?
Correct.
And we came in at the 462-805?
Correct.
So, we saved $275,000.
Yes.
Just want to make a point after the armored car issue that we're saving money here. So, thanks, that's all I had.
Councilman Tupper?
Public Works Director Von I, I don't, maybe I missed it in here, but what's the expected lifespan of this vehicle?
We've currently gotten 16 or 18 years out of the piece of equipment we have now. So, between 15 and 20 years, we would expect something like this to last, you know, pushing 20 years.
Councilman Durand?
Based on population of Watertown, that is a 37.5 cent per person savings. Good work, Councilman Peters.
City Manager back.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to point out that this is an enterprise fund. These purchases are not made out of the general fund and not made out of the 212.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is, if I look at the armored vehicle versus this, the armored vehicle looks like a good deal, unless this is made out of some type of armor. But a couple of the questions I had that in requestedness to come off have already been asked and answered. One of my big questions is, what does it cost this year to do composting? You know, that, not the collection per se, but how do we handle that and what our options are? And I think Mr. Von I has an answer to that. So, Mayor, I'm good with where we're at, with the questions been asked and answered. So.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments or questions? I do have a question. It's for the new Superintendent Davis. What would you like to tell the people of Watertown as a, welcome, here I am. Actually, just, where do you come from? What's your experience? Tell us a little bit about yourself. I like to introduce new hires when we get them.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, my name's Scott Davis. My wife and I just moved here a couple of weeks ago. Heath, unfortunate, he told us it was Tampa Bay, South Dakota, but, just kidding. We got here just as the big storm arrived a few weeks ago. But no, we were looking to relocate from the Seattle area. I was previously with Waste Management for 15 years in the waste industry, both in the disposal and collection side for WM. My wife is from the Bismarck area, so all of her siblings and parents are up north there. So, we were just looking to get back closer to her family and this was the perfect opportunity.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, sorry, if I may.
Yep.
Just to add to Scott's resume, because he's been a little bit modest, but prior to his solid waste career with Waste Management, who's a nationally renowned solid waste company, he also spent some extensive time in the transportation industry, building his own company and selling it off and I think maybe starting up another one after that. So, he's very well-versed in transportation, the trucking, shipping, transportation industry, along with the solid waste industry, which is a great fit for this position.
All right, thank you. One other question, Superintendent Davis. If you have any connections still at Waste Management and can get me tickets to the Waste Management Open, held every year down in Arizona, I would be open to...
I do, and I'll see what I can do for you.
I just want to make it clear, I wasn't expecting an affirmative answer. I will say, I will pay for said tickets.
Okay.
Thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome.
All right. Any further questions or comments on item K? All right, hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Durand?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to other business. Any other official business? For city council member announcements, I have one. I made a mistake at the beginning of the meeting. I should have asked everyone to stand for a moment of silence for the Deputy Sheriff of Moody County, Ken Prorock, who lost his life in the line of duty just recently. And it was a, it's a sobering reminder of the conversation that we had earlier tonight. So, just for a moment, everyone, please rise and respect the lives of those who risked their lives for ours. Any other city council announcements? City Councilman Peters?
I do just want to say, congrats to all the employees in the awards banquet. I wasn't able to make it, so I'm sure it wasn't a party, but congrats, everybody.
I was going to actually ask City Manager Mac if she wanted to list off some of those people, but that can be in City Manager Report if you want to.
Y'all beat me to the punch. It was on my list of things. So, congratulations to our annual award winners. Thank you to those who were able to be there Saturday night. Employee of the Year is Matt Brandsrud with Park and Rec. One in a Million Award went to Teresa Hillis at the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. Mentor of the Year is Heath Von I. Rookie of the Year was Darcy Nichols. Creativity Award went to Michelle Miller at the zoo. And the Caregiver Award went to Ryan Fisher. I don't think I've missed any. So, big congratulations to all of them and a thanks for all their hard work over the last year.
And I'd like to just say, I think on behalf of the council, those were the people who won the awards on Saturday night, but we really do appreciate the work done by all our city employees and you're all winners in my book. I'm sure the ballots cast for me for all those awards were just lost somewhere.
They were. I didn't, actually, I think the chief pulled them all out. He helped me review them all.
But seriously, we do value the work. We are all a team here and we have to depend upon each other to do our jobs, to make this city the fantastic place it is to live. City Manager Mac, any more?
Yes, just a few things, Mayor. She's not here with us tonight, but I would like to introduce Cassie Hyzer. She started today as the City Hall Office Specialist, so when you come in, you'll see
and anything that we can iron out can be ahead of time so that we present the best face forward to the public when we go, when we go forward with that. So the date is going to be tentatively scheduled for the second weekend in April, but we are working with our large donors, in particular Prairie Lakes Healthcare System, to make sure that that grand ceremony is, in fact, as grand as can be. But we are also going to be doing some soft opening for the varsity games in the next couple of weeks. So it'll be a two-for-one party, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. But as far as like letting the public in to walk around the entire facility, that is not going to happen during the soft opening at the varsity games, but we will have activity there. We just, we literally cannot have people walking around the facility when the youth of our community are in locker rooms and playing. That's against the rules of like South Dakota hockey and USA hockey, so it's like the grand opening where you can walk around and see everything that our money got for us is going to be in April. But if you want to come out and watch some boys varsity games, that's going to be in February, and that'll be exciting. So we encourage you to do any and all that you can to support this new facility and a new amenity for Watertown. So just wanted to explain that to everyone. City Manager Mack, anything more?
No.
There is a request to go into executive session to discuss a contractual negotiation. Chair will need a motion to do that, but first I want to make it clear that we will be taking no action when we come out, but the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion made by Councilman Bueller, was it? And seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to go into exec, executive session. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.